Welcome, everyone. Would you rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father, as we meet tonight, may our minds be clear and we make, as we make our decisions, may we be always thoughtful of the duty that we have to our citizens and our city. We pray for neighborhood spirit and are always mindful, the generosity, peace and trust will give rise to a strong community. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stand, hopefully liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 29. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Shields. Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell. Councilmember Edson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shields is an eye. Please record the vote. Passes eight zero. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. Councilmember Shields. Thank you. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is council roundtable. Items of general interest, community announcements. Are you going to the parade? Councilmember Pryor.
I am going to the parade, but I need an inside place to park. Because I do not want to deal with the traffic or the people. So that's, that's what I need.
So if you're gonna go the parade, you're gonna have to deal with the people.
I know.
A lot of them.
I know, I know. But I'm hoping to get lucky. I'm hoping that we'll just drive up and I'll see the perfect spot and it'll be right on the parade route and my kids will all be good and it'll be fun. So.
I will admit that I played college football, so I know football. I love the NFL, I love the Chiefs. And when McKinnon didn't go in that end zone, I about freaked out. And I, I know, I know that was smart, but it was still a little too risky for my blood. Because I did not want to see a missed field goal. So, yes, I freaked out. All right, I had to have council comments. I did go to Jeff City today, but I'll save it for the comments, council comment section. I'll tell you how that went. Next is public comments.
Mayor, I've not received any public comment requests.
Okay, thank you. And then we have a proclamation. This is one of my favorite proclamations of the year. I love these people. So would you all meet me up front and I'll read our proclamation for March for Meals Month? Out in the middle here. How are you? It's good seeing you. I'm gonna hand the phone over, or the microphone over in a second, but let me, let me read this proclamation. Whereas on March twenty-two, nineteen seventy-two, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure amending the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five to include a national nutrition program for seniors sixty years and older. And whereas, for more than five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels and is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Lee Summit, Missouri, have served our community admirably for more than forty-nine years. It's always amazing every time I see that. Whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at a significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to the welfare. And I can be a firsthand testimony of that. I've, I've been with you out there and it's true. It's, it's, it's a big part of the, of the visit. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Lee Summit deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic, inclement weather and other emergencies. And whereas, the senior population is increasing substantially, and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state and local funding, volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. By virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty-twenty-three as March for Meals Month. Can I get an applause? How about you say a few words for us and introduce yourself?
Awesome. Thank you. I'm Suzy Newsome, and I'm Board Chair of Meals on Wheels of Lee Summit. And we are so excited here to be here today. As Mayor Baird said, we're in our forty-ninth year, and that's just unbelievable. And not that long ago, I talked to one of our founders and she said, I never thought it would last that long. I never thought it would. But have faith in Lee Summit and the support. And as he said, the donations, the helping spread the word, forty-nine years, there's still people that have never heard of us that need our help. So and those are your friends and your neighbors. So Kathy, do you want to? Kathy Yates is one of our board members and a longtime volunteer.
I'm the secretary, so I send out a lot of thank you notes and letters. So if you contribute, you get one from me.
As a final thank you, we would like to present Mayor Baird with his own Meals on Wheels t-shirt.
I, I will wear this. I will come out and volunteer. If you've never volunteered, it's really super fun. You, people volunteer like one day a week, maybe. They, you can do two or three or five days a week, but you, you pull up, they throw the food at you in your car, and then you take off and you race over to, to a senior's home or someone, someone that's, has a disability. You drop off the food and they're so grateful. And it could just take thirty minutes of your day, one day a week. And it means a whole lot. So I, I'm very excited to wear that. So thank you.
One more quick thing. I see some first responders here. We had to actually contact you five or six times in twenty-twenty-two, because when the clients don't answer their door or their phone, we find out why.
Well, that's a big part of the, of, you know, our, our focus is public safety, wellness checks, and working closely with our first responders and such. So thank you. Well, how about a photo? Here we go. Thank you. How's it going?
We should just, we don't need to worry about it anymore. Pixel, maybe?
Okay, Councilmember Pryor, you have a question?
I do. So the Meals on Wheels, does it count as high school community service hours? Okay. Okay, perfect. Is it only, is it Monday through Friday, or do you do weekend, Monday through Friday? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Since she didn't have a microphone, the answer is yes, the community hours counts. They do hundreds of hours with students, and it's really awesome in the summertime when the students are off and they can. So thank you. Okay. That takes us to our order of business tonight. We have some proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. The first one is bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-four. Councilmember Shields is with us virtually. Can you, would you start us off, Councilmember Shields, with bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-four?
Certainly. I move for second reading of bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-four, an ordinance approving the award of bid number twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two-nine to purchase masonry services and repair on it as needed basis for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals to MTS Contracting Inc. and authorize the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading of bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-four by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes eight zero. Councilmember Shields, would you please read for adoption?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash oh-three-four. Ordinance approving the award of bid number twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two-nine to purchase masonry services and repair on an as-needed basis for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals. The MTS Contracting Inc. can authorize the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second re, to motion to adopt. That is bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-four by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-five?
Mayor, I'd be happy to. I move to advance to second reading bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-five, an ordinance approving the use of a cooperative contract between the City of Kansas City, Missouri, and Crans of Kansas City to purchase truck equipment, fabrication and installation services as needed, and authorizing city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-five by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Felker, would you please?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the adoption of bill number twenty-three dash oh-three-five, an ordinance approving the use of a cooperative contract between the City of Kansas City, Missouri, and Crans of Kansas City to purchase truck equipment, fabrication and installation services as needed, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-five by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's unanimous. Go, it's adopted. Councilmember DeMaro, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-six?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-six, an ordinance approving the award of contract number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-one-two to conduct an audit of the city's equipment replacement program and overhead charges to Matrix Consulting Group, LTD, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-six by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember DeMaro, would you please?
Sir, move to, to advance for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-six, an ordinance approving the award of contract number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-one-two to conduct an audit of the city's equipment replacement programs and overhead charges to Matrix Consulting Group, LTD, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-six by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it's unanimously adopted. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-seven?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-seven, an ordinance approving a statement of work with Analyst International Corporation for the upgrade of server operating systems and loss and ERP software in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand dollars, two hundred and forty dollars, sorry, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-seven by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMaro. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-seven, an ordinance approving a statement of work with Analyst International Corporation for the upgrade of server operating systems and loss and ERP software in the amount of one hundred and eight, two hundred and forty, excuse me, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-seven by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Mayor Protem Lopez, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-eight?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-eight, an ordinance amending section twenty-nine through forty-one of the Court of Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, Governing and Public Safety Advisory Board Establishment and Duties.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-eight by Mayor Protem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Mayor Protem Lopez, would you please?
Yes. I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-eight, an ordinance amending section twenty-nine through forty-one of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, Governing and Public Safety Advisory Board Establishment and Duties.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-eight by Mayor Protem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to proposed ordinances. First reading, Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-nine?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-nine, an ordinance authorizing participation in the Kansas City Regional Resource Sharing Agreement with the Regional Homeland Security Coordinating Committee, RHSCC, in coordination with the Mid-America Regional Council, MARK, to strengthen current working relationships and emergency preparedness between jurisdictions within the region, especially during times of disaster, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-nine by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. I see we have Assistant City Manager Lake ready to go. Councilmember Felker, put her on the spot.
Well, I actually, since you were up there, I thought, I wasn't gonna ask a question because I thought you might begin, but I thought it would be nice just to hear, since this is our first reading, to hear a little bit about it. I know we have the packet. But if you could speak briefly to the, to the matter, I may have a couple follow-up questions based on your response.
Sure. So the Regional Resource Sharing Agreement is presented by the Regional Homeland Security Coordinating Committee. The RHSCC, as you guys know, you all know, bring together public health, public works, fire, EMS, law enforcement, hospitals, medical examiners and other agencies representing various jurisdictions in the nine-county bi-state region. This coordinating committee assesses target hazards and coordinates disaster emergency response plans and includes training and exercises on those plans. The agreement is a product of that process and reflects FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency's best practices. And the city attorney has reviewed the agreement as well. You know, in many cases, mutual aid agreements between jurisdictions and between agencies exist. This isn't to supersede any of those agreements. However, it does create a framework for instances where there aren't agreements between agencies. Hopefully that answers your question.
So I, one of my questions was, this, this kind of agreement doesn't, has not been entered into, this is being presented as a first-time thing. We're not doing something we've done in the past in terms of just the overlay of the agreement.
Correct.
But it's more of a formalization, perhaps, of ongoing cooperation that's already happening.
Correct. And, and so in this case, it is that, more of that formalization of ongoing cooperation that's already happening. It, you know, kind of furthers our, you know, commitment to the, the resource sharing that we do concurrently. However, in certain cases, you know, maybe that a jurisdiction that we don't work with as frequently, that is part of that nine-county region, you know, they may have a request for a particular piece of equipment that one of our agencies could provide. And so where we don't have that mutual aid agreement already in place, this kind of creates that framework.
And as, if I read through it correctly, it still encourages jurisdictions that enter into these sharing agreements to, well, to actually enter into a separate agreement distinct from this framework. I mean.
Correct. In many cases, they do that. You know, in the fire service, that's kind of a natural thing that's been going, ongoing for many, many years. You know, where we have mutual aid agreements within, you know, fire service to fire service. However, when it comes to like, public health and the fire service, or for example, in, in the case of law enforcement, a lot of law enforcement agencies have drones now. And so say there's a large flooding event where they may need that particular resource. You know, there really isn't a typically a mutual aid agreement between, you know, say, Platte County and, you know, the Lee Summit Police Department. So it kind of helps bridge those gaps, but it does not commit us to, you know, if that resource was needed here in our own city, that doesn't commit us to have to send that resource.
I, I appreciate how it's written. I mean, I didn't read it word for word, but kind of scanned through it, and it seems to walk the line of providing the opportunity to coordinate, but not requiring us to. And, and in terms of liability and things like that, I thought that was helpful. So that's all I, all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess I would just ask, is this gonna help during when you say emergency preparedness? Situations like COVID, because there were, to be, to be, just to be honest and candid, there were times that Mark didn't really come through as far as a unifying body.
You know, I think as agencies or actually different jurisdictions, now that we have the resource sharing agreement completed and has been vetted by various jurisdictions, I think as those jurisdictions sign those agreements, that puts them more in play and, and helps remind them of that coordinated effort. I think, yeah, in many cases, I think it, you know, in, in such a large event, it was difficult to, you know, everybody wanted to do something and that coordination took a little while to get up and running.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'm not seeing any further questions, so I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to proposed ordinances. Second reading. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-two?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-two, an ordinance authorizing the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, to issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed one hundred and three million, one hundred thousand dollars in connection with the Blackwell Residential Rental Project, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash zero-three-two by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember DeMaro. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it passes six-two. All right, it takes us to committee reports. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our Legislative and Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting yesterday, and we discussed several topics that are going to be taking to our state legislators, including trying to solve for the funding gap in the two ninety-one interchange. Upgrade and moving the Missouri State Highway Patrol. Our, our opposition to the Kansas City proposed landfill and issues with MoDOT funding for things like trash mowing, right-of-way maintenance. I know those have been some issues that are really important to our constituents, so I just wanted to, you know, read into this meeting that there are things that we're actively discussing and going to be trying to work with our state legislature, legislators to address. And I know, Mayor, that's probably gonna lead into what you're gonna talk about with your visit to the Capitol. So I don't know if you want to mention anything in conjunction with, with that right now, or just save your comments for, for roundtable, but I know it's all kind of related there. So, thank you.
Would you like me to speak to kind of what I was talking about in the legislative meeting? Going.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So in that legislative meeting, I was explaining how last year we went to the state and we asked for, we had an ask for the ARPA funds, and we were able to, to, with the help of Senator Seer Poy and Carrie Engel, Representative Engel, we were able to, they were able to get through the budget, ten and a half million dollars to go towards sewer infrastructure in the Todd George area. And that, this year, there's a lot more money in the, in the coffers up there. They have six billion dollars, that's with a B, six billion, that are supposed to go towards infrastructure needs. It's from, from the federal government to, to the state of Missouri. It's really more of a transportation type of, of funding. It's for roads and bridges and, and things that have to do more with transportation. So they say infrastructure, but it's not really, there's not very much allocate, supposed to be allocated, that is, towards sewer. There's some, but it, it's, it's not near as much as roads. So I was saying that we need to go up there with, you know, an ask, a big ask. And when I think about what federal roads we have, because that's where these, these dollars are technically supposed to, you know, be allocated towards. And I think about the growth that we have on the, you know, throughout our community, and we have fifty highway that comes around and, and, you know, goes east, but also goes northwest. And then you have four seventy that comes from the, from the west and then loops up north and goes to Independence. And I think about the incredible growth and, in, in activity, business, and even potential residents on the north side. I just think five to ten years from now, we're at risk, we're at risk of being a Grandview Triangle if you try to go north on four seventy. When you get off, off two ninety-one and go north onto four seventy, it's gonna, it's already a standstill at five o'clock. What's it gonna be like in five to ten years if, if everything keeps going like we think it's gonna happen there? It's Struther and Todd George. And that's, we can't fix that. That's gotta come from the, the, the federal government. It's a, you know, for federal highway. It's a four seventy, and it's a major artery. It's, it's not a seventy highway, but unless we go and ask and, and explain that this is a huge problem, and can you imagine what it's gonna be like if they don't address it now, then, you know, rumor has it, all the money's gonna go towards seventy highway all across the state of Missouri. So we gotta make, we gotta, we gotta give our representatives and our senators some, something to, to fight for. And so I'd like to go up there and that'd be one of the ask, as well as funding the higher patrol, like the staff has brought forward that we've got a funding gap. And I, we can't do more for the higher patrol. There's only one option. They have to fund the gap. Otherwise, we'll have to, crazy as this may sound, do it without moving the higher patrol. We, we have to fix that interchange. It's one of the most dangerous interchanges around, as far as crashes and such. So, so we'll just take those two big asks and, and, and what we do when we go to Jeff City is we try to make friends. And, but we try to also empower them with information. Is that, did I do good? Councilmember Shields?
As always, Mayor, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for queuing it up or teeing it up, just like we did for Butker last week, last Sunday. We teed it up twenty-five yards right through the middle. Okay, Councilmember Felker.
Just continuing with committee reports, Public Works Committee met this, well, met yesterday, and did just a number of kind of routine business matters and also began, continued really, not necessarily began, the conversation on capital improvement plan. So we'll see more of that and just encourage you to look, as council members, to go ahead and look at the agenda, to look at what is already in place, and whether you have any suggestions, whether we're talking about sequencing current plans for capital improvements or additions to it. So welcome input on that. And I think staff would appreciate that input in advance as much as possible. Also, License Tax Review Committee met, it's one meeting a year, and it was a good meeting. We, nothing really big changed in that meeting.
You didn't raise a bunch of people's fees?
Nope. That's the important thing. We did not approve any change in fees, so. All I have.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't see any other committee reports, so we'll go to council comments. I'll start it off so that in case you have questions about the public hearing. I went to the, to Jeff City. I went last night for a public hearing that was at eight AM this morning. I didn't trust myself to make it on time by getting up that early. So. So, I went to the public hearing and this was a public hearing to, for HB House Bill nine oh-nine in which you would expand the one mile, a half mile from, from a municipality, municipality for having a landfill without our permission. And we were asking for, actually Representative Hafner sponsored the bill and he was asking for that to be increased to one mile so that both Raymore and Lee Summit, so that it would trigger, trigger a public hearing so that both Raymore and Lee Summit would have an opportunity to voice our concerns and basically forces them to work with us. And so, Representative Hafner did a great job of explaining the situation and why he was bringing this forward because he, he said in his words, they have failed us. They is in the, the legislature by not having adjusted, having looked at this ordinance or this bill, this statute in the last fifty years because it's a fifty-year-old statute. And he's like, this is why we need to go back and look at and fine-tune these things because technologies have changed. The world has changed and a half mile is not enough to protect necessarily a bunch of constituents because there's a lot of density around this location. And it's potentially moving forward without any of our say. So, he teed it up quite well too because then the public got to speak and Raymore spoke first and then I spoke and I just basically told, told everyone that we're a pretty good-sized city, hundred and five thousand. We've got a lot of growth. But we're managing it healthy and then we have a strategic plan. We know what we're doing. We're doing things the right way. We work with our neighboring cities. Where we work with, with Mark and, and explained what Mark was. So, Mark got talked about a lot, Mid-America Regional Council. And that we, we follow the process and the process is to work with your regional cooperative, which would be Mark, to have a say in these things. And unless they give us this, increase this to one mile, we are not going to have a say. And that, you know, that's what we were asking for. I explained, I went on to talk about how we feel that we are good neighbors and that we pride ourselves on being, you know, a role model city for the state of Missouri. And when Lee Summit goes or when Missouri rises and, and things go great for Missouri, that means things are going great for Lee Summit. And, and it also means that when Lee Summit is, is growing in a healthy and good way, that that's a good thing for Missouri. Because we're sending a lot of property tax dollars and a lot of sales tax dollars to the, to the county, state and to our city. And all we were asking for is a seat at the table. So, get us a seat at the table by extending this one mile so that we can have a say in how we manage our waste management as far as when, where, how and, and location-wise. And so that's, that's basically what I did. I read it, so I didn't fumble around like I did just now. And it took me about five minutes to get through it, so I tried to condense it down for you guys. The meeting went on. There were other people that testified, some citizens. The mayor of Green, Grandview also testified, the, the numerous council members were there from Raymore. Belton Mayor was there, but I don't know that he ever testified, but there was a good show of support. And only two people that were against this testified and one of them was the applicant for the landfill. So, Jennifer Monheiser is her name, testified and she had to, at that time, go ahead and, and give the name of the LLC. So, once she gave the name of the LLC, then you can pull up and see the na- the, all the lobbyists they've hired. They've hired seventeen lobbyists to hound these representatives to try to get support. And Ms. Monheiser got up there and said that they were just a small business owner and there's way too many rumors going around that aren't fair to them and they couldn't communicate with all of us because they didn't know if they were, they don't know that they're going to put a landfill here and that's why they're not communicating with everybody. And, you know, people like Lee Summit and Raymore and Mark and others. So, basically, the vibe in the room, there were fourteen representatives on this committee. It was, is called the Local Government Committee for the House. A lot of former council members were on that committee, by the way. And so, there seemed to be a lot of support for it to pass. Probably will not get voted on anytime soon, as in it might be a month before this committee actually votes on it. If they do vote on it and approve it, which it does look like, like I said, the vibe was that they would vote for it, then it would go to the House. The Senate has the same bill on the floor or, you know, in committee to go to the floor. And just so you know, even if the House passes it and it gets to the Senate, there's always potential that it could be filibustered. If it gets filibustered, they will shelf it and permanently and it won't ever get passed. So, there's still might be, we still might have a long way to go on this. We could go through all this work and the process might whoop us. So, we might have to find another way. Is that, did I do okay, Mr. Head? Did I explain it okay? Mr. Dunning, anything to add? Dr. Buck did a great job. Yes, he did a great job. He testified. Yeah. So, he got up in the morning though and drove, but he's an early riser. He, you know. All right. I, I was early to that meeting, that's for sure. I wasn't going to miss that meeting. All right. Any other council comments? I'm sorry, we're going to have a busy February, super busy. So, we'll get out of here early tonight. Staff Roundtable?
Just one quick thing, Mayor. Speaking about regional partnerships, we do have resources that will be assisting our neighboring jurisdiction, having a phenomenal parade tomorrow. So, we'll have, we'll play a part in that, some of our resources helping them out with that. And so,
Okay. I'm sorry, I meant we have a, a busy February and March, so we're going to have MML next week. Then we have a February twenty-eighth meeting and then we go right into March. There's no break. There's no break this month. We almost always have a break at the end of the month, but because of MML, we do not. So, but we'll, we'll be okay. With that said, thank you, staff, for being here on Valentine's night. Thank you to council. Go, go enjoy. This meeting's adjourned at six forty-two.